Hey, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please. Ms. Burns?
Mr. Parentano?
Present.
Mr. Allen?
Present.
Mrs. Bowman?
Here.
Ms. Boyle?
Here.
Mrs. Hellenbeck?
Present.
Mr. Kovacs?
Here.
Mr. Marington?
Here.
Mr. Cirillo?
Here.
And Mr. Sullivan is absent with notice. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Stand for a pledge of allegiance. The Board met in executive session this evening prior to the meeting to discuss matters of employment, issues related to labor relations, matters related to litigation, and matters related to school safety and security. Our district's mission statement is that the Shamani community builds futures by empowering each child to become a productive citizen and a lifelong learner. Do we have any announcements?
No announcements.
Superintendent's report.
Good evening. I'm Mr. Minion, sitting in for Mr. Jones, who is attending a superintendent's conference this evening. Board Art Room Gallery, the Board Art Room Gallery this month is highlighted by the artistic talent of Fertabar Elementary. Students are presented by art teacher Dawn Louisis. Enrollment Report, February's Building Enrollment Report can be found on Board Docs. Course Information Night for Parents and Students. All families of the Shamani 8th grade students are invited for a course information night at the Shamani High School this Thursday, February 13th, 2020, at 6:30 PM in the auditorium. Families will also have an opportunity to tour the high school from the hour of 6:00 to 6:30 PM prior to the course selection information. Team Problem Solving to Escape. 4th grade students at Fertabar Elementary School participated in an escape room activity in the library. Teams followed QR code trails, discovered a secret code of library shelves, unscrambled mirror image words, and found the final key. The Shamani We Build Future Awards. The award is presented to district employees who work to accomplish the district's mission and make significant contributions towards our district, implementing the district's strategic plan recently following where recognized as We Build Future Award winners. Lisa Rutlich, Administrative Secretary of Pearl Buck; Danny Tryon, teacher at Tewanka Elementary; Len Davis, teacher at the Shamani High School; Joyce Koltzinski, bookkeeper; and Paul Sorola, school board member. For your entertainment, tickets are now on sale for Proquesting Shrek the Musical. The show begins next Wednesday evening with showtimes on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of 7:00 PM, and then Saturday's matinee starts at 1:00 PM. Tickets are on sale for $10 and $8 for general admission. Magnetics at Buck. Magnetic Levitation Trains Are the Future. 4th grade students at Pearl Buck Elementary recently built their own miniature magnetic levitation trains. Working in teams, students researched train designs, then created 3D trains and assembled their own train tracks for their train models. Students made 3D-printed trains for the tracks while problem-solving issues they encountered in the creation process of making their train glide smoothly along the tracks. The final step of this cool project was students then presented to their classmates and discussed the problems that they encountered during the creation process. During the creation process, I actually wish I was there, and I missed that. I apologize. Learning Math Using Groundhog. Mrs. Pinchetti, kindergarten teacher at Tewanka Elementary class, learned Groundhog's Day this past week, which included looking at their shadows, making predictions, and making bar graphs. The paper groundhogs did not see their shadows, neither did Ponchatani Phil. So it looks like an early spring, hopefully. High School Poster Contest. League of Women Voters of Bucks County is holding their annual high school senior poster contest. This year, seniors are being asked to create posters that illustrate their feelings about voting and the democratic process. This year's theme, What Voting Means to Me. Contestant winners can win up to $500. Poll for the House. Aluminum Soda and Drink Tabs are being collected by Maple Point Middle School to help support Philadelphia Ronald McDonald House and their children programs. This is an active program throughout the school year, and tabs can be dropped off at the main office. The Shamani Steam Expo. Please mark your calendar for Wednesday, April 1st, from 6:30 to 8:30 PM. Admission is free for the Steam Expo. There will be hands-on activities such as 3D printing, robotics, planes, rockets, and Star Lab and forensics. Who am I? In highlighting Black History Month at Pearl Buck Elementary, they will be hosting an in-school program featuring pop-up exit and multiple stations courtesy of the African-American Museum of Bucks County. This event will take place actually tomorrow and Thursday at Pearl Buck. Each station will present a different era of American history. The museum representatives will educate our students at Pearl Buck on African-American history. Traveling the museum is a great way to educate our students and highlight some of the historic figures that have had influences, not only in the country, but also in Bucks County. This concludes Mr. Jones' superintendent report.
Thank you, Mr. Minion. Next is our semi-annual report for this month is from our Human Resources Department. Our Human Resources Director, Kelly Kozic, has a semi-annual report that's on our Board Docs. If you want to check it out, you can go to Board Docs and read it. Tonight, we have a presentation from Maple Point Middle School. Principal Andy Sokol is here. And Mr. Sokol, could you start us off, please?
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. First, I'd like to thank our students and staff for coming out to support this program. So, we're here today to present our Maple Point mentoring program. What does that look like? So if you were to come through our building around 2:25, you would see a variety of activities that would be occurring. For example, last Friday, I happened to walk into one of our classrooms, and they're making peanut butter and jelly sandwiches. How does that relate to mentoring? Well, the backstory to this is students ended up in pairs, and they had to create their specific instructions on how to make this. And then they would give it to another partner, and they'd actually read it. And as they're reading it, the other team would have to follow step-by-step to create this peanut butter and jelly sandwich. So imagine leaving out steps in what that sandwich just may or may not look like, taste, and of course, we checked for peanut allergies. You may walk through and see groups playing Chinese tic-tac-toe competitions. I was fortunate to walk in and have competitions with our students, and they get very competitive. You may walk through and see Uno tournaments going on. In a little while, you'll see an activity that we did. It's a combined win game activity. It's a competition, and we're actually going to invite you to participate with our students. We feel that the mentoring program, Family Friday, is a point of difference for Maple Point Middle School. So where did all this come from? First off, we went and looked at our district beliefs, and we felt, "Bought to." All people having worth. In mentoring and Family Fridays, we want to make sure our students are having that laughter, joy, and hope that are essential for their quality life. We're valuing diversity, strengthening our society. We're looking to build self-esteem within our students. We want to make sure that our students have a responsibility to themselves and to others. And finally, that family is a cornerstone of society. Well, family is the cornerstone of our mentoring program, and we really want that to be embedded into our school. How was this identified? A few years back, I was looking at a way to shrink the size of our building and for our students to build relationships. I got feedback from students, from staff, and parents on how we can make them feel one. Bringing 5th grade into a big building, how can they feel a part of this? So I was fortunate back in 2018 to attend a presentation to the University of Pennsylvania, the Delaware Value Consortium for Equity and Excellence with Dr. Hancock. And at that presentation, I happened to see Dr. Christopher Liang, who is a professor and a published author from Lehigh University. His presentation was on ACEs. ACEs is something that deals with adverse childhood experiences that students experience in the classroom that affect learning. Anything from abuse, neglect, family issues, divorce, poverty, all kinds of things that students carry into the classroom and affect their learning. At that presentation, when I finished, I asked Dr. Hancock, "Could we bring Dr. Liang to Maple Point to talk to our staff so we could see the impact of childhood traumas?" Through that process, it led to the mentoring period because we realized that every student needed an adult to turn to, that knew them, that they could talk to, that they could go to, and the mentoring process has led to that. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Sean Neely, one of my assistant principals, and he's going to go through the creation of the mentoring period. Mr. Neely?
Good evening. So our teachers were armed with that information, a very powerful message from Dr. Liang. And a lot of them hit the ground running and went back to their classrooms and did some impromptu surveys with their classes about how many of these things affect each and every one of them in their lives. And the results were astounding. They came back and reported to Andy and I how many of these things were actually affecting the kids that were sitting in front of them each and every day. So as an administrative team, we came up with the idea that we need to do something. So we came up with the goal, and our goal is that every Maple Point student has at least one adult in the building that can advocate for them and to whom they can turn to in any time of need. We looked at our win classes. We cut the class sizes down from 20 to 30. We used every teacher in the building. We cut them down to 16 to 20. Students in grades 5 to 8 will stay with that win teacher as they move through all four years at Maple Point. Our regular win period runs on Monday to Thursday, and we now have Family Fridays, which all these activities take place. But during the win period, the kids are going out, doing whatever they need. They're getting the extra help in other classes, so they have the ability to see other teachers. But on Friday, they stay totally with inside their family. So we knew we couldn't do it alone. So in June of 2018, on our last-day faculty meeting, we asked for a group, for teachers to stay back to begin to look at how to create this for us. And after the faculty meeting, we called together expecting to get maybe 15 or 20 staff members. We ended up with 50 or 60 who sat in a room last day of school in June. And I have with me right now two of them who can discuss what we actually just talked about during that. So I have Mr. Chuck Lumio, one of our 8th grade science teachers, and Mr. Kevin Hastings, one of our 8th grade social studies teachers, who talk a little bit more about where this came from.
Thank you. I'm Kevin Hastings. Chuck Lumio. After we met with Dr. Liang and had that meeting, one of the things I did in my classroom was I decided to do a confidential poll. And I asked students what of these childhood experiences they had gone through. And I was shocked by the results. High percentages of kids in each class had experienced divorce, and abuse, neglect, et cetera. And I thought to myself, and I knew Chuck and I had been discussing this with other staff members, that how many of these kids fall through the cracks? How many of these kids that we don't know about are suffering when they come in to learn? And we started to have conversations when Mr. Neely invited us to that meeting, and it's where this all kind of took off.
Good evening. I'm Chuck Lumio. So to parlay on what Kev had said. So prior to the meeting that Mr. Neely was talking about, we went down to his office, and we presented this idea to Mr. Neely. We said, "What if we take this gigantic school and we shrink it? And how are we going to do that? We're going to do it by taking 5th graders and mixing them with 6th graders and 7th graders and 8th graders. And we're going to mix these groups so that they can matriculate through Maple Point and have the same person that they see every single day, and build a relationship with that same person. Not only the teacher, but the kids in the classroom. So that we can, so that if kids walk around the hallways, they don't feel like it's such a big place because they know someone wherever they go. If an 8th grader's walking in the 5th grade hallway, a 5th grader knows them, and they could shout out their name, you know? And it all came from an experience that I had had on the street. Walking down the street in New Hope with my family, and somebody yells from a car to my son, "Hey, Chase!" And I looked at my son. I said, "Who is that?" He goes, "Oh, that's a kid from the high school." Now, Chase was in 4th grade. I said, "Well, how do you know a kid from the high school?" He said, "Well, they all come down, and they talk with us in our rooms." And I brought that to lunch the next day, and Kevin and I started talking about it. We presented to Sean. It's worked wonders. It's a wonderful thing. And when we called together that group at the last day of school in 2018, and we thought we'd get 15 people, we had 50 people buying in. And when we walked out of that room that day, we knew that what we could create here at Maple Point was going to be so much more powerful than we ever even imagined. And we've come a long way since 2018. And we've got, our assistant principal, Neil French, is going to speak to us about the progression of where we've come from and now where we're going to head to.
Thank you, Chuck. Thank you, Kevin. With the information from Dr. Liang and some of the informal polls that were given by teachers, we set out for the 2018-2019 school year with pretty ambitious intentions. We knew that these issues were prevalent in our building, and we wanted to hit the ground running in 2018-19 to see how we could attack them. And we, early in the year, we put together on a PD day teams of teachers who were tasked with coming up with activities that we could facilitate during the win period that would help us achieve our goal. And although the activities were productive and very well thought out and with good intentions, we found that in 2018-19, we were just a little bit maybe too heavy. We were diving headfirst into some topics that maybe the students weren't necessarily ready for or comfortable enough in their group to discuss. And we had a good year, and we felt like we made progress, and the groups were growing, but it was too much of student-led activities. The teachers were at the forefront of creating the activities and delivering them, and the focus in 2018-19 was maybe a little bit too much adult-heavy. And although we had a productive year, heading into 2019-20, we took a step back and we kind of changed gears. And what we did is rebrand from Mentor Mondays in 2018-19 to Family Fridays in 2019-20. And the thought process there was ultimately, we're trying to create these families inside these win periods. So we took a step back and thought about what do productive families look like? What do productive and healthy and successful families do? They laugh together. They support each other. They play together. They enjoy each other's company. And much like our own families, we didn't choose our family members. We didn't, these students didn't choose these groups that they're with in win. They were just kind of randomly generated through the computer, just like our families are randomly generated. So some of the skills that needed to be in place in order for this to be successful were compromise, just like we compromise in our own families, problem solving, mediation when necessary. But at the end of the day, no matter what we go through on a particular week, the goal was to leave on a Friday feeling good about who we are as a family. Some of the photos you see here are just some action shots from random win periods throughout the course of the first semester. It's as simple as playing checkers. The middle picture is a group that created their own board game. Their win group got together and came up with their own game that they kind of designed and played together. We're going to talk a little bit in a few minutes about what inclusion looks like inside these rooms. And one area of progress is our No Place for Hate Door Decorating Contest, which we did participate in in 2018-19, and then again in 2019-20. And what I found early in the school year was before the door decorating contest was even on the calendar or discussed, students were walking up to us saying, "When's the door decorating contest?" We hadn't even broken out into our win families yet, and the students were ready to go. We took a picture of every door in 2018-19, and again this year. And I think you can see the effort, the competitive spirit, the cohesion. Just with one year of steam kind of behind the group, they just really dove in and took this personal, and took a lot of pride in what they did. And that's just an example of the growth. When we set out to do this, we said, "This is a culture change. This is something that's going to take four years. Until that first group of 5th graders goes all the way through and experiences this, we won't truly know the impact." But that's just one quick example of what it looks like from year one to year two. We are excited to make this real for you tonight. We've invited some of our staff and students here to talk about what they're experiencing on a day-to-day basis inside their win period and on Family Friday. First up, we have Ms. Allison Hughes. Allison is a second-year 6th grade science teacher, so her experience at Maple Point kind of coincides with the program. She's been here two years. The program is two years old. With her tonight is Molly Hitchen, who also happens to be our student council president, and Matthew Gomez. This is an interesting part about the program and how it helps with transition. Matt came to Maple Point just two weeks ago. So when he arrived at Maple Point, he was assigned to Ms. Hughes's win and her family, her win family. And Ms. Hughes and Molly are going to talk a little bit about what life looks like inside their win. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Allison Hughes.
Good evening. As Mr. French said, my name is Allison Hughes. I am a 6th grade science teacher at Maple Point. I just want to give you a little glimpse of what my win period looked like in the beginning of the year, or sorry, the beginning of 2018. I came into this school coming from a very small school of about 400 kids. And I came to this school of four grades, 1,500 students, extremely large school, and that was overwhelming for me. So I know that 5th graders coming into this school, I'm sure it's overwhelming. And when this program started, and I'm sure Molly's going to stress this point, it was very awkward when these 16 kids originally came into my room. They were so quiet. They wouldn't talk. They all came in the room, and they sat together in their own grades because that's who they knew. And then today, if you were to look at my room, I couldn't stop them talking if I tried. They help each other. They respect each other. They have conversations about school, outside of school, sports. They teach each other things that are going on as you go through the years of Maple Point and middle school. As I was talking to them about this experience of coming here, some of the things that they just kept saying was, "This is my comfort zone. I know that no matter who I get next year, or who, what teachers I have, or who's in my class, because that is the number-one thing that they worry about from year to year, who will be in my class, I know at least I have win." And I found myself thinking this year, coming into, I have 170 new kids coming in, at least I knew my 16, 17 kids that were in my win period. So for me, as a new student, and I'm sure other teachers, every year we get these new students, I get to see these students grow. So I can only tell you my perspective, though. I want to tell you the experience that my kids have seen from their eyes. And Molly has been here longer than I have at Maple Point. This is her fourth year at Maple Point. She's an 8th grader. And on the complete opposite side of the spectrum is Matthew Gomez. He came in two weeks ago now, which you would have not guessed because a week ago, our first Family Friday that he experienced, I looked over, and I'm trying to find Matthew amongst all the different games that we have going on, and Matthew's like right in the middle. He wasn't sitting alone like I thought a new student would be doing or doing his homework. He was right in the middle, playing, I don't know, he was playing Django or something at the time. So the ability for the other kids to wrap their arms around him, show him where to go, answer his questions, help him with his homework, just like he was a member of our family for the last 18 months, was absolutely incredible to see. So each day, they shock me. I want to have Molly explain a little bit what she's seen from the beginning of the year to now.
Hello. I'm Molly Hitchen. I'm an 8th grader in Ms. Hughes's win class. So at the beginning of this year, I was like super-duper excited to get back to our win period. And although we went back to our first period for the first month of school or so, I couldn't wait to get back to my win family because we had so much growth in between the first couple of weeks when it was just so awkward, and I did not want to talk or do anything. I sat quietly, did my homework. But at the end of the year, we couldn't stop talking to each other. I made friends within grades. I'm friends with a bunch of 7th graders, 5th graders, 6th graders even. And you'd think that 8th graders, why would I want to talk to a 5th grader? But I see these 5th graders and 6th graders and 7th graders in the hallways, and I always say, like, "Yo, what's up? How's your day going?" Because it just makes that much of a difference to have friends within grades so that way we can, like, we recognize them in the hallways. And I can say, I see their homework. I'm like, "Oh, I had that teacher last year. Let me help you out." Or I show them what I'm doing so they can see what they're doing in the upcoming years and things like that. And it's always just so comfortable to know that, you know, if I have a rough day or something like that, it's a Family Friday. I can go back to my win at the end of the day and play games, and I'm with a trusted adult that even though I've never even had her in 6th grade, I had different teachers, I can still trust her and tell her about my day, and she can help me, and I can help her, and I can help other students, and other students can help me. It's just comfortable. It's a great environment to be a part of, and I'm very thankful for that. Thank you.
Okay, our next guest is Mrs. Melissa Curran, who's in her 11th year. She's an SLS teacher in our building. Laura Miller, an 8th grader, was hoping to join her tonight, but unfortunately, she was out today. Anthony Manzo is going to join her, another 8th grader. Mrs. Curran's message is going to be about inclusion and how inclusion is one of the spokes in the wheel of our program and something that we're trying to promote on a day-to-day basis.
Good evening. I'm Melissa Curran, and this is Anthony Manzo. So most of my day, I'm teaching specialized learning support with 5th through 8th graders. These students have many different disabilities and obstacles throughout their day to communicate, to interact, to learn. So I spend most of my day making sure they feel as part of the Maple Point environment. And I have, you know, in the past, expressed to Mr. Sokol about how, you know, we don't always feel like we belong. You know, we kind of always stay off to ourselves. So when he told me about this idea for Mentoring Mondays at the time, now it's Family Fridays, it was great to me. Like, we can spread these guys out. They can meet new teachers. They can meet new people. So it was a nice way to see them feel included. And then what I watched happen through the two years that we've been doing the program is my students that would stay kind of off to the side in the beginning, and I couldn't convince them to talk or use their devices to communicate with the other students. Like, now they're like spread out. They're running games. They're teaching 8th graders and stuff how to play the games that they're excited about and that they want to bring to school. So I brought Anthony here with me. Anthony's become a little bit of a leader in our class. He's in 8th grade, and he's experienced all the years. So when students come and they have concerns, Anthony kind of seems to share his journey and figure it out. So today, Anthony and I were talking a little bit about win. He said one of his favorite things about win is helping the other students and getting to know kids that he wouldn't necessarily have the opportunity to know. Right, Anthony?
Yeah.
So he, do you want to talk a little bit about how you've...
Coming into Mentoring Monday in 2018, I was like really nervous. Not nervous, really. Just I didn't know any of the kids in there. Like, I knew the 8th graders. That was it. We had like spread-out tables, and I would just sit with the 8th graders because I never knew, I never interacted with like all the other students. But towards the end of that year, like, I realized that they're just like us. We can just hang out with them, talk to them normally, tell them my problems, and they could help me, and I could help them, and just share my experiences in life, and hopefully, they learn from them. And coming into 2019 school year, I was really happy because I know like all the kids in my win besides the 5th graders that just came in. But like just talking to them, like, for example, like, personally, I like messed up on a few tests this year, but I like wanted to show them like that they could do better on them. So I was talking to Ms. Curran like about two weeks ago how like I want to work harder because next year I go to high school and stuff, and I want to like be upper, in higher classes and stuff. And I was talking to one of the 7th graders. And I was talking to one of the seventh graders that's about to come into the eighth grade and like, "Hey, like try your hardest. Like you need to get up higher in, uh, high school and stuff because it will benefit you throughout your life." So that was my experience with, uh, Win Friday and Family Friday.
Okay, we're going to bring Mr. Chuck Lumio back up. Uh, he's joined tonight by, uh, Jigar Patel, a sixth grader. And they're going to talk about the growth, coming in as a fifth grader and what that looks like and kind of the progress from year one to year two. Uh, Abby Stern is also here, an eighth grader who's in, uh, Mr. Lumio's win. So we're going to turn it over to Mr. Chuck Lumio.
Thank you again for some time. I've got some special kids up here with me. The beauty of, of our Family Friday and our, our win family, the Lumio family, is that it brings out the good in all of these kids. And, uh, I've got some great examples right here in front of me. Jigar and Abby are just wonderful, wonderful people who we've been able to see them grow in front of us and become leaders and inspire others. And we watch the younger grades gravitate towards the older grades. Jigar came to us from India and, uh, as a fifth grader, there was a lot of cultural differences, uh, here in, in the United States. And we spend, uh, we spend time each day talking about things, just whatever comes to, uh, Jigar's mind. And we laugh and we have fun. And, and when I think about my day, the highlight of my day is at 2:25 when these kids come in. And I get an opportunity to just talk and be a person with each one of them. So I want to introduce Jigar Patel real quick and then we'll get to Abby.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jigar Patel and I thank, um, and I thank Mr. Lumio for letting me have a speech over here. So I like win because, um, uh, we get to do all these activities like a door contest and, uh, those things. So another good thing I like about it is that we, we can help each other like, um, uh, on our homeworks and like talk to each other. So yeah. Yeah, so I thank Mr. Lumio for letting me have a sp-
Thank you, Jigar. Fantastic. One of the things that Jigar also told me earlier is that like coming to win and coming to, into our family makes him feel less alone, more a part of things. Can you, uh, elaborate on that a little bit for us? You had told us about it.
So you get to talk to all the, um, seventh and eighth graders and like when you meet them in the hobbies, you can like talk to them and like say hello and yeah. So you don't feel lonely like you're the only fifth grader around and yeah.
Fantastic. Thank you, Jigar. Hang out up here with the rest of your family while we, uh, while we, while Abby gets a chance to talk. So, uh, the other, uh, student that I have here today is Abby Stern. And I've watched Abby grow, uh, as a leader. She, last year is our first year in, in Family Friday. She had some people to look up to. She had eighth graders, great role models that she could look up to. And it really, I think, inspired her to become that same great role model. So I bring to you Abby Stern.
So I'm Abby Stern. I'm an eighth grader at Maple Point. And I came here, um, the first year that we started here, like in win class, the first year we started was in, I was in seventh grade. And I was very nervous and I was very like hidden and like that's not normally me. Like I'm very out and bold and all. And I was like very nervous and I would come in mid-year and I would know everyone there. You met like everyone with different backgrounds. Like I would know even their names. I wouldn't even know where they're from. I didn't ask like any personal questions or anything like that. But I would just know them and I know that I, deep down inside, like I had a safe place. I could always talk to the eighth graders. I could look up to them. They would always come in, do their homework. We'd have a little bit of a conversation. And then this year I became a leader as an eighth grader. And we, we just, I met the fifth graders. Every single day I just wait outside the door waiting for the fifth graders. I wait for Jigar every day, even though he's late most of the time. But I just know that like, I, wherever I am in the hallway, I just know that should be like, I know someone in the hallway just from win. And I get to experience like where they're, where they're from or like if they have homework or I could say hi, I help them out with homework. Even if they're in my grade, I still help them out with homework because like it's just important creating like a bond with people in different grades with different backgrounds and yeah.
Good job. So just to wrap it up, you know, we always get better at things as we go. And this program's getting better and I can't wait to see where it heads in the future because we're on to something pretty big here. So thanks for your time.
Okay, so for our final installment, we were hoping to give everyone kind of a realistic view of what Family Friday looks like. Uh, we are very excited to have two staff members here with us and some of their, some of their win family. So, uh, Mr. Pienta? Can, can I introduce you first?
Relax.
Mr. Pienta, he's fired up. He's ready to go. This guy's fired up. Sixth grade, uh, special education teacher. Uh, Mr. Frank Verrell is, uh, one of our math teachers. And one of the great things about the Family Friday is the ability to join up with another family. So kind of extend your family. And we have a lot of teachers that do that throughout the course of the year. Mr. Pienta and Mr. Verrell are two teachers who often bring their families together on Friday for a little bit of fun. So they're going to show you a game, as you can see on the machine here, called Pienta Mania, uh, which is a kind of a general knowledge trivia game. And they have some of their family members here. We have Linay Arpa, Logan Byrne, Julia French, Jack McVeigh, and Ryan Jacobson. And what we would like is to have some of our board members join either Mr. Verrell or Mr. Pienta's win family and maybe play around. We, I, I know Dr. McGee's probably looking at his watch. I know we're running a little overtime. So we're, we're going to play, we're going to play eight rounds, quick rounds, eight rounds, and just give you a feel for what it's like to compete as part of a family. All right, I'll turn it over to Mr. Pienta and Mr. Verrell.
Can we have the, when the classes come up here? There we go. All right. Okay, so, you stand. So it's very simple. There's too many, I guess? Yeah, we don't have any questions. So we don't need everybody. Yep, perfect. So the thing with Pienta Mania is very simple. I ask a question and you know the answer. All right. You ring in. Once this rings, this does not ring. No tops. Ready? First volunteer? Volunteer? You want a test ring? Know how hard you're going to push it. Test ring? Okay, here we go. Hold on. Is our first question coming up up here? I'm trying. That's usually how many for us. And if not, I'll just ring the question. Not your fault. Well, I have the local sports team, huh? It's a narc contestant, so hey. Here we go. Question number one. The former Maple Point High School opened in 1975. Who was its mascot? Who's this? Correct? Test ring to hold your question?
Uh, yeah.
All right, here we go. Next question. At what temperature, what is the normal boiling point of water?
100 degrees Celsius.
Is? Next question. The planet which is closest to the sun is? Mercury. Next one? Which is the highest mountain peak in the world?
That'd be Mount Everest.
Is correct. Thanks for helping. Tell the students. Yes, two students? Which is the deepest ocean in the world? Pacific is correct. Way to go. Which country is known as the land of the rising sun? You got it? Japan. Who was the first president to be inaugurated in Washington DC? James Madison is incorrect.
John Adams?
John Adams is incorrect. On his second guess, it was Jefferson. Last one here, kind of a visual one. One more? Come on, Ryan. Represent. Last one. Here we go. J.K. Rowling is the author of what?
So I'd like to conclude this presentation. First, I'd like to thank you for participating, uh, and supporting Maple Point Middle School. And I want to share a little fact. So how do we know if this is working? We went back through some of our data. Back in 2015-16, we took a survey, a mid-year survey. And at the time, I looked at questions that were similar. Mid-year through, 53% of our students felt like they had an advocate or support at Maple Point halfway through the year. We gave the same type of survey this year to our students. Uh, am I comfortable with having at least one adult? And over 73% felt comfortable, strongly agreed or agreed with that. And did they feel comfortable turning to another student to advocate, feel comfortable? Same thing, 74% of our students right now are feeling. Our goal is to get to 100%. We're not there yet, but we're definitely heading in the right direction. So I'd like to thank you for your time. Appreciate your support for the program. I'd like to thank you for all that you do. Thank you very much.
Demasiel? Alyssa Donahue. Glad I'm not checking my Facebook. Brooke Donahue. Juliana Exner. Julia French. Matthew Gomez. Molly Hitchens. Ryan Jacobson. Jacob McVeigh. Anthony Manzo. Laura Miller. Jigar Patel. Abby Stern.
Alrighty, now that, uh, we've had that beautiful presentation, but the people here at Maple Point, it's just a fantastic program. It's really great and the kids, the way they, uh, express themselves about it. Makes you really feel good that they're getting something out of it, so. That moves us on to, um, our district boardroom art gallery. You already did that? I missed that? I'm sorry. Public comment. Do we have any signups?
No signups.
There's no signups, but is there anyone that wishes to approach the podium and speak? Seeing none, we will move on. That brings us to items for approval at the public board meeting. Item 2.01, budget transfers. Item 2.02, bid approvals. Item 2.03, overnight trips. Item 2.04, out-of-district placements. Item 2.05, settlement agreement. Item 2.06, first reading of policy 219 and 246. Item 207, BCIU number 22, 2020-21, program and services and instruction materials and research services budget. And that, we got all them, Paul? That's all of them? Alrighty, they'll be for the next public board meeting, which is February 25th. 25th is the next public board meeting. Uh, that brings us to committee reports. Uh, business operations. Mrs. Hollenbach?
The next business operations meeting is in this room, 6:30, March 31st. It was originally the middle of March, but we had to move it for scheduling conflicts. So it is March 31st in this room. We will be talking about the budget and planning for next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Educational development, Mrs. Boyle?
Uh, our next meeting will be, um, April 21st, um, which is a Tuesday at 6:30, uh, here in the boardroom.
Could you also do policy, Ms. Boyle?
Yes. Um, the next policy meeting will be March the 3rd, uh, also a Tuesday, uh, at 6:30 here in the boardroom.
Thank you. Um, facilities and planning is usually by Mr. Sullivan. He's absent this evening. Uh, Mr. Irwin, do you have a date of our next, uh, facilities and planning?
I believe that, uh, meeting is scheduled for, uh, March 25th.
No, it's not March 25th then. It was rescheduled, I believe, so I'll have to check. Let me check when, okay?
We'll get back to that at the end of the meeting. Representative reports. IU Board, Mr. Sharillo?
Just wanted to let everybody know, there was a, you may have seen in the news, there was a fire with the Quakertown facility at Bucks County IU about two weeks ago. Through very hard work, they were able to source another location. The fire occurred on Friday. They were resuming services that following Wednesday. So Mark Hoffman and his team did a very good job. They're very committed to making sure the students don't go without services. So I'd gotten some questions, I just wanted to, it's up and running. They have a new facility and all the information is available on their website.
Alright, we'll settle at the end of the meeting. Nishamani Education Foundation, Ms. Bowman?
Yep, good evening. The Nishamani Education Foundation Board Meeting met here yesterday, February 10th. We made plans for the fourth annual Harlem Wizards game, which will take place Saturday, April 18th, at the Nishamani High School. The tickets will be going on sale late February. We are seeking business sponsorship as part of the fundraiser for the event. So if you are interested in becoming a business partner, sponsor, please reach out to either me or Chris Stanley. Also, the, excuse me, the NEF Board chose five Nishamani alumni from Alyssa Community submitted nominees, which will be our first ever Alumni Achievement Awards. The plans are underway for a ceremony in late May to honor each of these alum and give them the opportunity to meet and inspire and mentor students at the high school and share their life stories and their life achievements. The Nishamani Educational Board Officer election will be held June at a date and time to be announced later. And anyone that is interested in serving on this volunteer board is welcome and encouraged to apply. Please contact any of the board members. You can do that through the Nishamani District website. We have a link on there. And our next meeting is scheduled for March 9th at 4:30 here at Maple Point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Boyle. Bowman. PSB Liaison, that's me. PSBA is working on quite a few issues at the state level. Charter fund, excuse me, charter school funding formula. PSBA is working with the state to try and reform the charter fair, charter school funding formula. PlanCon for school buildings. PlanCon process from those, like us, that have been through it, needs much reform and PSBA is working hard so that process can be streamlined. It's working with our state legislators to try and get that passed and get funding, of course, increased and reimbursements back to the districts. And they're also working on, with the House, on House Bill 283, which is now in the Senate, which is a bill to help school districts charge for right-to-know requests. Some right-to-know requests are extremely simple, don't take a lot of time. Others are quite complicated and very lengthy and costly, like the district just had to go through one, where we spent considerable amount of funds to compile it. And we feel that that law needs to be modified so that some of these extreme cases where you need, you know, hundreds, if not thousands, of documents are requested and you need legal counsel to vet them before they're released, that we can get some appropriate fees charged on them. It's something most boards would support and we hope that the Senate takes that up and passes that. That's all I have. Mr. Allen, Technical School?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, all. The Bucks County Technical High School met January 27th. Couple items, several items, actually, we went through. A professional counsel report led by Dr. Lee began discussions for floating a bond for capital improvements, much-needed improvements over in that building. More to come on that. Again, that's just initial conversations, but we're beginning that conversation. March 23rd will be the school board recognition dinner. Usually, it's during school board recognition month, but it always snows. So proactively, they pushed it to March, so I believe that is the date we settled, on March 23rd. And it will snow in March, guaranteed. Brings me to a couple items that we approved was the, this blows my mind. We approved the senior prom for 2021. That's how far ahead it has to be. Also, that will be at DeMarion and Cinnamons in Jersey. Also approved the 2021 senior class trip to Walt Disney World in Orlando. The program that, near and dear to my heart, the SOAR program over at the tech school, we approved for, let me see, June 22nd through July 23rd. That is mostly our special education students, challenged students. And they put on a fantastic program for them throughout the summer. There's a couple lunches that they serve that I try hard to attend and thoroughly enjoy my time there. We also agreed our outdoor power equipment teacher, Mr. Cesari, will attend a equipment and engine training conference in April, April 1st to April 4th. He brings a lot to the table with that program, right? This is interesting. We approved participation in a community-based project. You know, we like to send those students out into the community to help out where they can, get some real-life experiences. This is for the Construction Academy, which covers our carpentry, electrical, facility services, fine woodworking, HVAC, and plumbing. February through June, they will be working at the Rescue Perfect Animal Rescue located in Ben Salem. I know students are always enjoy those projects. We enjoy getting the feedback from the community from them. And, no, not exactly last, but we accepted a grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Education in the tune of $50,000. Competitive equipment grant. I do not have what we will be using that for, but money from the state's always a good thing. That brings me to the next board meeting will be Monday, February 24th, 2020. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. To follow up on our business operations, excuse me, our Facility and Planning Committee meeting will be March 25th at Fertabar Elementary School Library at 6:30. As with all our committee meeting dates and public work sessions and regular work sessions, please check the district website. If there are changes, that's where they will be posted. That brings us to the second public comment period. Is there anyone for a public comment? Please approach the podium, state your name, your occupation, the area in which you live, and you have three minutes, and please no personal attacks.
My name is Carol Kessler. I am a taxpayer since 1977 in Nishamani. I was employed in 1986 by Nishamani School District, and I took an early retirement in 2009. I am currently working as an administrative assistant since 2017. In 2018, well, when I took an early retirement, Nishamani was still taking substitute support staff. That's what I was. I was an IA. And I started subbing with the district whenever there was a vacancy. Then when Source for Teachers came in, I got grandfathered into that and I worked for them. And then they became Mission One, now they are ESS, and I still was employed by them. In May of 2019, I had an incident at Hoover Elementary. And only having three minutes, I went into quite detail with Mr. Meehan and through corresponding and had a meeting with him. I was humiliated by the principal. I was, my integrity was challenged, my character was demeanored, and I was wrongfully accused of doing something. And I was injured by a student, a regular ed student, and I was the one who was then guilty because the mother accused me of pushing that student. In all my years at Nishamani, I have never, ever had any incident, any reprimand, anything like this. And I addressed this with the principal and I spoke to him. And he then said that he was going to remove me from the classroom and put me in another assignment. And I said, well, that's like saying I'm guilty because a mom accused me. We viewed the video and it clearly shows. I was attacked and the student was not pushed. I did not touch the student. I protected myself like I was trained. And he then proceeded to give me different assignments and then he told me on, this happened on a Thursday, field day was Friday, to participate, no consequences. And on Monday, in his office, he said to me that I can't follow directions, I'm not qualified for the job. And I asked him why he didn't give me any support in the meeting that he, myself, and the mom, and the student were in. And he said, because I'm just a sub. And he said, he could have me written up for being insubordinate. He said, he could have me removed from the building, calling ESS. And he said that no one wants to work with me. I have had nothing but glowing end-of-the-year evaluations, and this principal gave me two, which he didn't have to, because I was the substitute working through ESS, but he gave me two glowing evaluations at the end of the year. After following up and meeting with Mr. Meehan and communicating through emails, the principal's resolution and his remarks to Mr. Meehan were false. He then sent an email out into the building regarding me without me even being copied on it. And it just continued. And so I went to ESS, got no support from them. I had no support from Nishamani. I was injured. I was removed. And the end result was, you are welcome to substitute at Nishamani, but not at Hoover. I understand my time is up, but I would be more than happy, I am willing, to go into detail about what had taken place there. And I know that another incident similar to mine had taken place 2019, 2020, this school year. And that's why I'm here tonight, because this is unacceptable. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Does anybody else want to approach the podium? No? Okay. Future topics. Does any board member have any future topics they would like to discuss? None? Board comments. Does anybody want to make any board comments? Mr. Kovac?
Yeah, so I thought it was a really interesting evening. I think most people know that I'm a, very passionate about STEM and STEAM education. Hearing that they're building maglevs and with 3D-printed parts is just, that just sings to my very soul. Yep, I'm a nerd, so I love watching other future nerds-to-be do their thing. I think it's awesome. And the top three, the top three skills that they found that are needed in today's workplace are problem-solving, teamwork, and interpersonal skills, or development of interpersonal skills. And so I just, it just, I'm really happy to hear that after listening to the presentation on the mentoring program, the mentoring program, I think touches upon that. They were talking about in another, in the superintendent's report, developing procedures of how to make peanut butter and jelly sandwiches. You see that at play. So I really like to see that that's happening in our school district. Makes me very proud to be part of that. And the one last thing I want to talk about is the STEAM Expo. It is, for those folks who are listening in, if you have a child, as I do, that is inclined towards anything STEAM or STEM-related, you really can't afford to miss this event. It's free, it's a wonderful night out, and it's, there's some amazing stuff. You could literally get lost there for hours. Unfortunately, it's only two hours long, so it's a wonderful time. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Marington?
Yeah, continue to be impressed with the faculty and the extra work and the creativity, you know, by people here tonight. We saw what I thought was an exemplary win program at Maple Point. It's a great use of time that otherwise often became dead time. You know, kids just kind of milling around or, you know, pretending to do homework, and they've managed in two years to turn what really were kind of like a study hall that not much was, not much was accomplished into a program that meets a whole lot of the goals of this school district. We're giving kids some free time to socialize across grade levels, across content areas. They're making friendships that I think will probably carry on through high school and maybe beyond. It's an incredibly valuable program and one that didn't come from us, you know, came from, you know, the people here, the creativity at Maple Point. So they're all gone, but I like to thank them anyway.
Thank you, Ms. Mar, Ms. Bowman?
So I'd like to thank everybody that came from Maple Point. I love that they took Dr. Liang's ACEs program and turned it into a program that actually addresses what's grow, a big growing problem in all districts, and that is trauma-related incidents among students. It interferes with their success. It sometimes interferes with their ability to attend school. And I think as a district, I'd like to see this type of program continue throughout all of our schools. I think it's something we need to look into for the future, maybe a professional development based on Dr. Liang's ACEs program. But I think, you know, they really hit something here in Maple Point, and we really need to take a closer look at our students that are coming in with trauma. Thank you. They did a great job.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Anyone else? No? Mr. Allen? Alrighty. I'll just finish up. Mr. Torrenta, is there any comment the board can make on the last speaker at the podium?
I'm sorry, it had to do a lot of, lot to do with personnel matters, so I would recommend that the board do not make any type of public comment with respect to that.
Thank you, Mr. Torrenta. To close, I can't say enough about the presentation we had tonight. The other board members that could speak about it a lot more eloquently than I can. Just the teaching staff to engage like that, the students to put themselves out like that to answer that engagement that they were offered. I can't see anything but great things to develop from that. And to have these kids at different levels, to know that they can interact with each other and grow with each other, it just seems like a great thing. So, you know, our hats are off to, you know, the building staff and there's so many of those teachers that came tonight that did, and that game we played, that was, that was pretty cool. I had to win one, so. Otherwise, gym nights coming up, right? Do you remember the dates? 28th, 29th for gym nights. I don't know, my kid was the blue kid, so go Blue for me, so. You sure? I swear, I swear I knew it was red. I just wanted to see if they, they knew that I was wrong. I could have sworn it was blue. Well, in my defense, he's been out a while, so. There you go. So I hope everyone that wants to attend can attend. And other than that, can I have a motion to adjourn? And other than that, can I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Kovac? All in favor? A meeting's adjourned. Thank you.